The meeting is now called to order. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker. Mr. Cancro. Mrs. Chu.
Here.
Mr. Hong. Mrs. Lax.
Here.
Mrs. Reese.
Here.
Mr. Seeler.
Here.
Mrs. Shaw.
Here.
And President Simmons.
Here, we have a quorum. Please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the board offices located at 760 Route 18, East Brunswick, New Jersey. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News and Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped for later broadcast. It is the policy of the Board of Education that videotape meetings are not edited for any purpose. Individuals who speak at the board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. And good evening, everyone. By this evening's venue and our crowd, this must be our annual Governors and Support Staff Awards. Just to go over the order of the agenda this evening, we will first begin with our awards program, after which we will then go into our annual reorganization agenda, followed by the superintendent's report. We will have the Good of the Cause for the Public. We will then go into our regular agenda, and then we do have a closed session. So with that, Dr. Valeski, do you want to...
If we could ask the board to take your seats down among the gathering. Good evening, everyone. It's my honor to welcome you to this year's 2017 Staff Award Ceremony. We are here to recognize and applaud our 23 Teacher and Support Staff Award winners, as well as the staff members who have served the district for 25, and unbelievably, 40 years. Their dedication and commitment to our students and the district is recognized and appreciated. A very special thank you to the family members here this evening. I'm sure you have been a major contributor to the success and accomplishments of these individuals, and have made your own sacrifices in support of their careers. It is now my pleasure to introduce Mr. Todd Simmons, President of the Board of Education.
Thank you, Dr. Valeski. Tonight does showcase why our town is so great for our kids and why our district is such a great place to work. Tonight, we honor those who model excellence, lead by example, and help make our district one that others aspire to become. Each of you continue to exceed our already high standards, and you do this every day. This evening's Support Staff Honorees includes instructional assistants, school security officers, secretaries, and information technology assistants. Because of your exemplary dedicated and tireless efforts, classroom instruction service, our schools are safer, our computers and technology run with little interruption, and our buildings are simply able to operate as they do. And this is all due to each of your caring and devoted efforts. And tonight's Governors Award recipients include elementary teachers, a school counselor, and, on a personal note, two extraordinary social studies teachers who I know firsthand can teach a thing or two about anything from Mesopotamia through U.S. history. You motivate our kids, energize our classrooms, and provide all too important counseling services, all while serving as a mentor and inspiration to your peers. Our children's continued success is due to your hard work, dedication, and capacity to share what you know with others. We know how talented our staff is. You are also among the most dedicated in the state, as tonight, as Dr. Valeski mentioned, we honor four staff with 25 years of service and one with 40 years of service. To this evening's Governors Award-winning teachers and counseling staff, our world-class support staff, and our 25 and 40-year veteran award recipients, on behalf of the Board of Education, please accept our congratulations and appreciation for the remarkable work you do each and every day. Thank you.
I now would like to invite Dr. Dana Zimbicki, President of East Brunswick Education Association, to say a few words.
Good evening, everyone. This week, we celebrate Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week as we honor our everyday heroes who make a difference each day in our schools and our community. Last week on May 1st, we, the Education Association, celebrated International Workers' Day. We wore red to school, we showed our unity, and we focused on our support for public education and unionism. During that day, we focused on a saying, and our saying was, "It's not about the selfie, it's about our village." Today appropriately, we honor 23 amazing individuals who contribute to our village and understand the importance of teamwork, collaboration, and enthusiasm for always striving for the best of the kids in East Brunswick. You have been nominated for this award by your peers, who understand the incredibly important work you do every day and the indelible contribution you make to our schools. You are simply our everyday heroes. So what is an everyday hero? First, to be a hero, you need to service others in need. Each of you have chosen the path of public education because you want to make a difference in the lives of our youth so they can blossom. Second, heroism remains an act that goes beyond something required. Each of you, I know, go above and beyond your daily duties in service of our students and community. Third, a heroic act is one performed without external gain. Each of you service our East Brunswick Village without the expectation of gratitude, rewards, or awards. You just do it because that's just who you are. Therefore, tonight, we are thrilled that we have the honor to celebrate each and every one of you. The East Brunswick Education Association would like to congratulate each of you and thank you deeply for the small and large task you do each day to make our village of the East Brunswick Public Schools spectacular. Without you, our everyday heroes, that would be completely impossible. Last, congratulations to our seasoned everyday heroes, as they celebrate 25 and 40 years of incredible service to our district. Congratulations, and thank you.
And now, I'd like to introduce a man who's the only person in the district that uses the wraparound feature on his business cards. His title is so long. Mr. Andrew Scanlon, Supervisor of Engineering, Business, Computer, and Consumer Sciences, and President of the East Brunswick Principals and Supervisors Association, will make a few remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Valeski, and it's also media. It's nice to see so many people out here supporting your friends, your colleagues, and your family. We have, tonight's theme is dedication and excellence. We have a group here so dedicated and entrenched in the East Brunswick community that they have dedicated at least 25 years to the district. In today's world, it seems very odd for somebody to stay in one career for 25 years, much less in the same place. And obviously, you know, 40 years is quite a sign of dedication and of loyalty. We also have a group of teachers here and support staff that are being honored because their peers and their supervisors have recognized them to be the best of the best. These honorees are your go-to people, they're the people you can trust, and they're the people that are there when you need them most. In a few moments, our principals will be speaking on behalf of each of the honorees, and that's always a highlight of the night, to hear how these people do such great things. And, you know, they just see it as, you know, that's my everyday job, that's what I do for just normal operating procedures. But it's much better than that, it's well above and beyond. So on behalf of the principals, assistant principals, supervisors, and department chairs, we'd like to thank and congratulate every single one of you. Thank you.
And now, to kick things off, I'd like to introduce the Master of Ceremonies and the Architect behind this special evening, Ms. Danielle Rogero, Director of Human Resources.
Thank you, Dr. Valeski. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Thank you so much for joining us here tonight for our Staff Award Ceremony. It's the best board meeting of the year. It's your presence that makes this night extra special. So tonight, with the help of our 11 principals, we will bring to life the story of 23 amazing people who work in East Brunswick Public Schools. Teachers, security officers, secretaries, instructional assistants, every one of them, every one of these honorees is what contributes to making our place a great place to teach and learn. So we're going to begin.
My name is Ron Lieberman, and I am the Principal of Bowman Row Elementary School. And it's my pleasure to present this evening's first Teacher of the Year, Kristin Drozdowski. Kristin's journey in East Brunswick Public Schools is much longer than one would imagine. Kristin is a product of the East Brunswick Public Schools, having attended Chittick Elementary School up through East Brunswick High School. After her graduation from Rowan University in 2011, Kristin was hired at Lawrence Brook Elementary School as a leave replacement. And in September 2012, she joined the team at Bowman Row, where her colleagues are proud to call her their Teacher of the Year. Ms. D., as the students lovingly call her, is a natural-born teacher. The tremendous commitment she feels for the students is evident by the positive attitude and exciting climate she brings to the classroom each day. Her role as a second-grade teacher allows her to teach all subject areas, however, she has a special passion for teaching reading. Read aloud is a special time each day in Room 15. It's not uncommon to hear her book, to hear her book, from the Judy Moody series, Her Favorite. Innovation and technology is also prevalent in her classroom, as she consistently seeks ways to infuse Chromebooks, iPads, and different other programs into center activities to enrich and enhance the curriculum. When you walk into Ms. D.'s classroom, it is clear that she goes above and beyond to meet the needs of each learner. In addition to being an excellent teacher, Ms. D. also builds strong relationships with the Bowman Row community. She attends after-school activities such as the EBF Barnes and Noble Day, the Ice Cream Social, and other PTA events. This truly special teacher is a prime example of excellence in our profession. Congratulations, Kristin Drozdowski. If you enter the main office at Bowman Row School, you are sure to receive a friendly greeting from this evening's first Support Staff winner. Kathleen Sajisi joined Bowman Row family two years ago and quickly became a valuable asset to our school. Kathy is an efficient, extremely competent, and has an excellent rapport with parents, staff members, and students. In an instant, she gained respect, and in an instant, I'm sorry, she gained the respect and trust of each staff member at Bowman Row. Kathy takes such pride to ensure that our school office is run productively and efficiently throughout the school year. She consistently makes herself available to help others when they are overwhelmed with their own workloads. Kathy also serves as an unofficial mom to the Bowman Row School. Very often during the mornings, during morning meetings, you can find Kathy outside in the hallway, directing students to their assigned locations, helping with untied shoelaces, or accompanying a child to the nurse's office. Her cheerful and professional attitude helps everyone in the school to feel like they are the most important person. Kathy takes great pride in keeping Bowman Row's school community informed by ensuring that our website is up to date. She frequently takes pictures of classroom activities and assemblies and uploads them so they can be enjoyed by all. Kathy enjoys bringing the excitement of the Bowman Row School Day to the working parents who otherwise may not be able to see what happened in school assemblies and events. It truly helps to build the community of wonderful learners that we have. Please join me in congratulating Bowman Row School Support Staff, Superstar for 2017, Kathy Sajisi.
Hi, I'm Danielle Donino, Principal of Central Elementary School, here to introduce Andrew Scala, Central School Support Staff winner for 2017. After a successful career as a mechanical engineer, Andrew wanted a career change. Believing the work that, believing that working with children was his true passion, he came to our district in September 2014 as an instructional assistant, where his love for children is evident in what he does each day. During his time at Central, Andrew has worked in many grade levels with children of various abilities and challenges. This year, in fifth grade, he supports instruction and positive behavior and serves as a mentor for our students. According to the teachers with whom he works, Andrew is an invaluable presence at Central School. He is friendly, supportive, and has incredible rapport with students and staff who flourish both academically and socially. And this is just in the classroom. Andrew can also be seen volunteering at evening events, including Fitness Night, where he promotes healthy living by playing sports with our students. He also volunteers as a one-to-one mentor to a fourth-grade student having taken him under his wing. Andrew has had a huge impact on his mentee, so much so that this is the student's best year behaviorally and socially at Central. Andrew loves connecting his talents and interests with his students. On one particular day this year, he brought in his acoustic guitar as a reward for the students for their hard work after completing their mid-year assessments in math. By playing the guitar and singing to them, he strengthened his already positive relationship. And this is just one example of Andrew's selfless devotion to his students. So, we at Central School proudly congratulate our Support Staff winner, Andrew Scala. It is with equal pride that I introduce Central School's Teacher of the Year, Ms. Merrill Bacourtney, an outstanding fourth-grade teacher. Merrill is knowledgeable, professional, supportive, and extremely dedicated to her students, and the staff at Central School cannot think of a more perfect person to receive this honor. Merrill began her career in East Brunswick Public Schools in 2012 as a special education teacher, and later transitioned to a general education position. Her dual certifications, combined with her subject area knowledge, has had a profound impact on the student achievement. Merrill intuitively gauges her students' needs and their varying learning styles, spending hours ensuring that her creative lessons are fluid and adjusted to meet the needs of all learners. Merrill is an eternal student herself. Upon learning she was going to be teaching science this year, she dove headfirst into the new science curriculum and next-generation science standards. She thrives on professional development and attends Teacher College Saturday Reunions in New York City twice a year. Not only does Merrill apply those new methods and strategies into her teaching, but she also shares her ideas with colleagues. Merrill springs into action when students need extra support or motivation outside of the classroom. Last year, sensing the need to engage a group of boys in reading for pleasure, she began a before-school Boys Book Club exclusively for fourth- and fifth-grade students. The effort and amount of dedication Merrill has put into this Boys Book Club is extraordinary. She plans engaging ways to discuss books, their reading, and games and competitions related to the books. The students create comic strips, and they Skyped with one of the authors. Seeing these students go from disengaged readers to people who think reading is cool is amazing. And this is just one example of how this creative teacher puts students' needs at the forefront of her teaching. It is her dedication to the profession and to students that enables all of her students to grow and progress throughout the year. So please help congratulate Central School's Teacher of the Year, Merrill Bacourtney.
I'm Megan Manetta, the Principal of Chittick Elementary School, a very special place with very special people, two of whom you will meet tonight. First, our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Gina Caruso, an individual who truly stands out to us on a daily basis. Gina started her career in East Brunswick as an instructional assistant while she pursued her teaching certificate. In the two short years that Gina has been with us, the social, emotional, and academic progress her students have made is truly remarkable. Without a doubt, this incredible progress can all be attributed to Gina's skills and never-ending devotion to her students. Gina approaches every day with confidence, determination, and a positive attitude. It is the belief she holds in her students' ability which guides the planning and delivery of her program. She is the constant cheerleader in her students' lives, and they sense the unwavering devotion to them. As a colleague, Gina is a team player who always makes herself available to any student who may be struggling. Without a moment's hesitation, Gina is ready to assist in any way possible. Gina is a master scheduler, putting the talents of her classroom assistants to work and allowing them to have creative control over learning activities. In the words of her nominators, "When we think of the term Teacher of the Year, we think of someone who is a go-to person, who can be counted on to put the student's best interests first at all times, no matter what." This is what makes Gina Caruso so special. Her primary focus is her student's success, and this is obvious in everything that Gina does on a daily basis. We are so lucky to have her. Congratulations, Gina Caruso. The 2017 Support Staff winner for Chittick Elementary School is an equally special part of the amazing Chittick community. Lead School Safety Officer, Frank Bottalary. Mr. B., as he is affectionately known, interacts with staff, students, parents, and visitors in a professional, kind, and friendly manner. While we all anticipated many improvements in safety and security as a result of the new SSO positions, we could have never predicted what an extraordinary addition to Chittick School Frank would be. Utilizing his expertise and prior experience as a lieutenant with the Middlesex Borough Police Department, Frank was instrumental in implementing changes in our building that have improved many procedures. Morning and afternoon drop-off and pickup have never run more smoothly, and Frank makes it his business to ensure everyone gets in and out of the building in a timely fashion. Frank is also a vital member of our school safety committee, having earned the nickname Captain Climate. The title was earned due to his involvement in all things Chittick. Frank decorates for the day of giving, takes an active role in every meeting, and participates in our school mentor program called Chittick Champions. What makes Frank special, and so deserving of this recognition, is that not only does he manage everything he's asked to do in his role as Lead School Safety Officer, but he gives so much of his time and himself to the staff and students. He is trustworthy, hardworking, creative, and thoughtful. In the short time that he has been with us at Chittick School, he has already left an impression on everyone he comes in contact with, from students, to staff, to parents. We would love to celebrate all that Frank does to make Chittick School a better place by honoring him with Support Staff of the Year. Congratulations, Frank Bottalary.
My name is Loretta Payette, and each day, I have the honor and privilege of working with the wonderful children, staff, and families at Frost Elementary School as their principal. We have very special people at Frost School, and tonight, you are going to hear about two of them. Irene Shahada is a treasured instructional assistant in our preschool program, and I am proud to introduce her as Frost School's Support Staff winner of the year. Irene is an invaluable asset to Frost School. She has the incredible ability to anticipate the needs of her precious young learners. Irene is the perfect role model in teaching them to become increasingly independent, more social, and to reach their full academic potential as they prepare for kindergarten. She inspires our students with quiet and appropriate direction, kind words, and modeling of desired behavior. This is especially evident during playtime, when our children are learning to share, get along with others, and take turns with their classmates. She motivates our students to try new things, both in and out of the classroom, as well as encourages them to make new friends. It is not unusual to see her running around the school's jungle gym with several children at her side. Our students naturally respond to Irene's warmth and nurturing demeanor. She is very creative in inspiring students to explore, whether it be through tabletop activities, within small-group instruction, or one-on-one. She functions as part-mother, part-playmate, part-instructor, and part-coach, all rolled into one amazing woman. And she is fearless, even faced with crying preschoolers. Irene is just as amazing with staff as she is with students. Her ability to multitask is incredible. Whether knowing whose turn it is for show-and-tell, which students are absent, or what activities we are preparing for, she's on top of it all. As you can imagine, with three- or four-year-olds, there is a lot to keep track of. This very caring individual has a can-do attitude and is an exceptional instructional assistant. We are so lucky to have her at Frost Elementary School and are so proud to give her this award. Please join me in congratulating Irene Shahada as Frost School Support Staff winner. Frost Elementary School's Teacher of the Year has had a truly exciting year. Not only has Carrie Atkins gained the title of Teacher of the Year, but she also gained the title of First-Time Mother. Carrie is a teacher who strives to help each student realize his or her full potential. Her dedication is quite evident as she works diligently to ensure that each of her students acquire the skills necessary to be successful. acquire the skills necessary to be successful. Kerry can be found working in her classroom early in the morning or well after school. She really gets around. For example, she is routinely spotted at Frost School's annual musical, sitting in the stands watching her students' baseball game, or having lunch with a table full of second graders. Kerry's former students arrive to 3rd grade with so much prior content knowledge, and they frequently declare, "Mrs. Atkins taught us that." Kerry is also a supportive, generous colleague. She is a true asset to the 2nd grade team and the entire Frost community. She has the natural gift of bringing others, her peace, and laughter, and calm demeanor, and her witty sense of humor. She also generously shares her expertise both as a mentor to new students and as a sounding board. Frost teachers can always count on Kerry to contribute new ideas and ways to improve our craft. When Frost School first received Promethean boards, Kerry spent countless hours helping teachers learn the software. She incorporates text, graphics, and interactive features. She sets high standards for herself, her students, and her team. In the words of one nominator, "I know what Kerry is like as a teacher because I work with her every day at Frost School, but I also know her as a former 7-year-old student." In particular, a 7-year-old who knew way back then she wanted to be a 2nd grade teacher. Some dreams really do come true. Congratulations to our Teacher of the Year Kerry Atkins.
I'm Joanne Shemelowitz, Principal of Irwin Elementary School, and it is my honor to present Irwin School's Superstars for 2017. First, Fatima McKinnon, our Teacher of the Year. Fatima dedicates each day to teaching our very special English-language learners. There are many special words to describe this amazing woman. The first is caring. Fatima embraces everything about her ESL students. She doesn't just teach them the English language. She meets and greets all of them with warmth, acceptance, and friendliness. All of her students know she is not only teaching them a new language, but she is their advocate and their friend. Fatima immerses herself into the lives of her students with genuine affection. She is trusted by them all, which encourages them to take risks and succeed. She truly cares about her students' families too, and is in frequent contact with them, whether to help them understand paperwork or important documents. She has used her own lunchtime to make phone calls home to help these families navigate their way into feeling at home in their new country. She is truly selfless and amazing in this way. It is always comical to see the little ones from kindergarten and 1st grade eagerly follow Fatima like the Pied Piper down the hallway to ESL class. Students learn so much with her, about all kinds of things, not just English. It's clear to see the fondness the students and parents have for this truly exceptional teacher. In the words of her colleagues, "It is with the utmost respect and admiration that we nominate this very special teacher. Irwin's ESL students, parents, and staff have a wonderful gift in Fatima." Congratulations to Irwin's own Fatima McKinnon. Irwin School has a very special person keeping our building safe and sound. Joseph Siskowski, our Lead Safety Officer. I'm going to start that again, sorry. Irwin School has a very special person keeping our building safe and sound. Joseph Siskowski, our Lead Safety and Security Officer. When reading the suggested criteria for Support Staff Award, Mr. Z., as we call him, immediately rose to the top. According to our staff and students, Mr. Z. is amazing. He is extremely flexible and consistently shows a positive attitude. He has a great rapport with all at Irwin. He is fair to all students, has extreme respect for them, and commands a well-earned respect from them. Mr. Z. is not only effective in his position as SSO, his attendance is exemplary, and his keen eye and detective background are such a plus in his work. We have, and I have personally, come to depend on him in our daily jobs. Mr. Z. is a trusted friend to every student. The kids adore him. You visit Irwin School in the morning, you hear students shouting their greetings to him. He is a respected, kind, caring figure at Irwin, and our students admire and look up to him. He serves as that father figure as well with his firm, fair, and nurturing style. He has a very fun way about him, and he is absolutely perfect for our student population. Mr. Z. is a wealth of knowledge too. He's a central member of our Janitzlaw team and became EpiPen-certified as a designee. He is very experienced in his field, which positively impacts our school, especially in difficult situations. He remains calm and collected, and all of us here at Irwin have come to rely on him for that feeling that we are safe. In today's somewhat challenging times, his strong presence is appreciated by all who know him. For all he does to keep Irwin School a safe, happy, fair, and fabulous place to be, we congratulate Joe Siskowski as Irwin Support Staff Winner for 2017.
Lawrencebrook Support Staff Winner began her employment here in September 2013. Meet the amazing Anita Co., an instructional assistant who shares her talent and love with everyone at Lawrencebrook School. What many people don't know is that Anita is a certified teacher of music with specialization in the woodwinds. Anita is involved in every aspect of student life at Lawrencebrook School. She recently grabbed a roll of brown craft paper and volunteered to create a display of trees, one for each grade, for students to post messages of inclusion and recognition of Autism Awareness Day. Without Anita's artistic ability, this would not have come together so beautifully. Many people rely on Anita, who is known for her kindness and collegiality. Whether she is helping to manage centers in the classroom, assisting a student, or acting as a Mandarin translator, Anita will do whatever she can to support the Lawrencebrook mission of reaching all students. Her coworkers will tell you she is just a pleasure to work with. In the classroom, she is dedicated to helping students become engaged in instruction. She moves about quietly, checking in with just the right questions and prompts to motivate students. During her time at Lawrencebrook, she has worked with students of all ages, from kindergarten to 5th grade, and she has been a true asset to their education. Kind, compassionate, creative, artistic, gifted, and caring, Anita Co. is a valued member of the Lawrencebrook staff and highly deserving of wearing the title of Support Staff Winner for 2017. Congratulations, Anita Co. Teacher of the Year does not seem like an appropriate title for our next winner. Superhuman of the Year works much better. Sarah Sauvigny exhibits an attitude that is positive and flexible. This can be seen at leadership meetings, response to intervention meetings, grade-level meetings, parent-teacher conferences, and ESL office hours. In her role as reading specialist, Sarah identifies the things a student is struggling with and immediately goes into a positive solution mode. Her common language is, "How can we help this student? What are we missing? Let's use a different strategy. Let's make this happen." Sarah has a wonderful rapport with everyone she comes in contact with at Lawrencebrook. This includes administrators, staff, students, and community. We are especially grateful to the kindness and respect she shows English-language learners and their families. She knows just what to say and how to say it to make all families feel welcomed and comfortable. Sarah's strengths are truly too many to mention, but her enthusiasm, dependability, and knowledge of academic resources are most evident. She has single-handedly reached out to over a dozen ESL students who needed more support. Besides looking into our students' academic issues, she also looks into social issues. During this holiday season, when it came to our attention that one of the families new to our school was struggling, Sarah and her husband anonymously outfitted the entire family with gifts so their holiday would be joyful and special. Sarah is a high-caliber person in all personal and professional areas of her life, and Lawrencebrook Elementary School is very lucky to have her here. Congratulations, Sarah Sauvigny.
I'm Cheryl Jones, Principal of Memorial Elementary School, here to introduce our very special Teacher of the Year Jennifer Margulies Smith. Simply put, Jen is a phenomenal teacher. Engaging, motivating, and dedicated are among the words we use to describe the 2nd-grade teacher at Memorial School. With over 15 years of teaching experience, she thrives and continuing to refine her craft year after year. To students, she is their champion and their hero, who provides a safe and supportive place where students love to come and learn. As her students arrive each morning, they light up with anticipation of the exciting day ahead of them. Jen's morning routine is incredible, consisting of motivating and brain-awakening activities. She challenges her students to develop strong, critical thinking skills and express their ideas with each other. They can often be heard through the hallway cheering, "It's Monday, it's Monday, get motivated, get motivated." It sets the tone for a positive day. Jen plays an active role at our school's professional learning community as well. She is a 2nd-grade team liaison, participates on the Read Across America Committee, School Climate Committee, and so much more. Supportive is another word we use to describe her, evidenced in her work as a new teacher mentor. She is a voice of reason in questions about curriculum, scheduling, and grading, and she makes people feel comfortable as her door is always open. It takes a big heart to shape little minds, and Jen Margulies Smith definitely has a big heart. In the words of one nominator, "Her enthusiasm for all aspects of her life inspires me to be a better teacher. She was the perfect role model for me as I began my journey in this field." Please join me in congratulating Memorial's own Jen Margulies Smith.
Our Support Staff Winner for 2017 at Memorial School is Christina Donnell. Information Technology Specialist and all-around amazing woman. Although Christina technically belongs to the Information Technology Department, we consider her an integral part of the Memorial family, not only because she is an essential part of our staff, but also because we just love her sunny disposition. As our IT specialist, Christina solves any technology problem we encounter with ease, whether it's with a cranky computer or a smartboard that isn't acting so smart. She jumps in with her calm approach and smile on her face. She is routinely seen bustling around our school, zipping in and out of classrooms, working her magic. The role that technology plays in our district is vital to the success of our students. Instructional activities are brought to a new level because of Christina's support. Her customer service can-do attitude makes every big problem seem like a little problem. She is truly dedicated to her position and wants to help staff and students learn with the best technology available. When you tell Christina your technology problem, she always answers you with a calm, reassuring smile that it will be okay. As one nominator articulated so well, aspiring to see someone as eager as Christina operates someone who clearly loves what she does and is patient and kind. She is dedicated to providing excellent support to her Memorial family and the district at large, and that's why she is Memorial School's 2017 Support Staff Winner. Congratulations, Christina.
I'd like to introduce a very special person who is our 2017 Support Staff Winner, Lucy Lucy is our Front Office Secretary and helper to all. Lucy's career in our district began when she was hired as an instructional assistant to work with our special education students. In that role, she was truly amazing in assisting our students to reach their highest potential. But Lucy wanted to do even more. Her strong organizational and communication skills, paired with her warmth and genuine personality, made her the natural choice for our Front Office Secretary. Whether helping teachers, students, or a member of the school, community, the kind and purposeful way she interacts is welcomed by all. Lucy has a heart of gold. She embraces new students as she welcomes them and their families to our Warrensdorfer community. New families leave our building with not only the necessary information they need, but also with the distinct feeling that they've become part of a new family, the Warrensdorfer family. Lucy welcomes new staff members with equal importance. Whether they need important details like where to find materials and supplies, how to enter an absence, or how to join the Coffee Club, she provides all that and more. One nominator wrote, "When you're a new teacher, you try to do everything right for your students, and your head is constantly spinning." Lucy makes our lives so much easier by leading us in the right direction whenever we need something. She turns what seems like a big problem, like when you can't access Genesis, into an easy solution. Warrensdorfer is a better place because Lucy is in it. Congratulations, Lucy Reed.
In 2011, a wonderful substitute teacher was hired by the district, and she quickly proved herself as a talented and capable educator. Kara Chaco, Warrensdorfer Schools Teacher of the Year, is a 2nd-grade teacher who has an undying love for learning, which she eagerly shares with her students. Kara is a lifelong learner, always searching for new strategies, tools, and motivators to enhance her lessons. Matter of fact, just yesterday, I visited her classroom, had to duck through cardboard tubes, and danced over some marbles that her students were using to create a rollercoaster that was helping them to study balance in motion, gravity and force. Her drive and enthusiasm for innovative learning is endless. She creates lessons that accommodate each student's needs, and she works endlessly until those needs are met. Kara's cheerful disposition is contagious. She is someone who others seek out when they need a pick-me-up. Her outgoing and friendly personality affects even the most shy student. She involves herself in nearly every extra activity there is during school hours, as well as activities after school, such as STEM Night, PTA events...
well as activities after school, such as STEM Night, PTA events, and the Warrens Dorfer Early Act Club. She is the club advisor, and she ran the New York Marathon last year. In a day and age when technology seems to take over our lives, Kara's personal touch in knowing her students and their families forms a truly special bond. This homeschool partnership brings the classroom to life for working parents. She communicates with them on a regular basis and involves them in the wonderful events and the curriculum in her second-grade classroom. For all she does, for her students, and for Warrens Dorfer Elementary School, our staff is proud to call her our Teacher of the Year. Congratulations, Kara Chaco.
I just want to begin by just sharing a true story about the teacher that we're going to be honoring this evening. We decided to give her a little bit of a surprise on live broadcast news the morning that she found out. She didn't know that was going to happen, so I believe her exact words to me when I shared this with 1,500 students and staff were, "I'm going to kill you, Mike." I understand that I'm in good company because her husband's here tonight, and he said the same thing. He talks just like, you talk just like to him to me, right? And he gets you all caught up like that. So I'm Mike Gaskell, the Principal of Hammerhill Middle School, feeling very grateful that this, in this very building, we have a social studies teacher named Donna Morelli, who has been named our 2017 Teacher of the Year with 26 years of dedicated service. Donna is a crea- Let's hear it, Hammerhill. Yeah, 26 years. Is a creative, well-respected teacher in our school district. She puts forth great effort to create a challenging, yet welcoming, learning environment for her students here at Hammerhill. Students who walk into her classroom are encouraged to share their ideas and reflections and are respected for them. So in turn, students in her classroom learn the importance of respecting and listening to others. Year after year, her students rise to meet the challenge she creates for them. This is a testament to the environment of mutual respect that Donna establishes in her classroom. Donna has an equal impact on her colleagues with whom she collaborates to develop innovative lessons that engage students of various learning styles and abilities. She thrives on experimenting with new teaching strategies and new technology. She inspires others with her enthusiasm to continue developing their own teaching practices in order to help our students meet the challenges of our society. Donna also serves as a coordinator for the Fairview Outdoor Education Trip, if that wasn't enough, for sixth-grade students. Her dedication and planning allows sixth-grade students to build on science skills and concepts they've learned throughout the year, as well as promote socialization and the importance of teamwork and cooperation. One nominator best expressed how we all feel when they wrote, "Throughout our lives, we meet people who leave us with a lasting impression. They touch our lives and inspire us to strive to be our best." This inspiring teacher is Donna Morelli. Congratulations. Charismatic, flexible, and creative best describes Hammerhill Middle School's 2017 Support Staff Winner, Instructional Assistant, Katherine Einwechter. I had to say that three times to make sure I pronounced it right. Kathy has a presence in the classroom that is like no other. She comes to work each day ready for whatever comes her way. She knows her students well and recognizes their needs both academically and socially. With her intuitive nature, she knows just when to step in and assist, when to let students fly on their own or whatever. She is great at thinking ahead and can adjust and be flexible within any given situation. Kathy's shown excellent classroom management skills and has developed a rapport with students and colleagues that's characterized by mutual respect. Quite simply, she's a role model for what we have come to expect here in East Brunswick as an environment where every student and every staff member brings value to our organization. Kathy continually impresses us with her commitment to lifelong learning. She studies the instructional styles of her colleagues and seeks meaningful feedback in her own instruction and assistance to students. It is this commitment to personal growth and her students' own strength and well-being that makes Kathy an outstanding instructional assistant. No one would ever guess that this amazing, energetic woman has her own community of learners at home. You see, Kathy is a mother of five amazing kids. That's right, a basketball team. We have no idea how she juggles it all, but we'd love to have an ounce of her energy. When you read the criteria for Support Staff nominations, it includes many things, but the one that sticks out in my mind is that the Support Staff member must be fair and flexible. I'm pretty sure if you look up "fair and flexible" in our dictionary, you can go online or Webster's, you'll see a picture of Kathy. We are so grateful for all the selfless dedication she brings to her job every single day. Congratulations, Kathy.
We're so fortunate to have many superstars in our district, and tonight's event provides a wonderful opportunity to celebrate them. Recognizing and celebrating excellence is one of the things that makes East Brunswick Public Schools so special. Tonight, I have the distinct pleasure of introducing you to a superstar named Louise Sultana. Louise began her career- Louise began her career in East Brunswick as a special education teacher at Hammerhill Middle School. The following year, she was transferred to Churchill, where she later became a school counselor. Regardless of the title she held, Louise was described by her peers as unique, remarkable, exceptional, a special educator both literally and figuratively. Louise gravitates to and embraces challenging students with her open, warm, and compassionate manner. As the school's Sources of Strength Advisor, she helps promote individuality, acceptance, and pride within our students. She thrives on the relationships she has built, always finding a way to form meaningful bonds with each student, incorporating her contagious sense of humor to help win them over. Louise also imparts life lessons and teaches students the importance of accepting responsibility and accountability for making decisions that might not always be deemed the best ones. While she's firm with this message, it's done without judgment. Louise listens, encourages, reminds her students to continually strive to be the best that they can be. Louise Sultana embodies the phrase, "Compassion is passion with a heart." One nominator shared this. Louise is without a doubt an inspirational role model for students and faculty alike here at Churchill Junior High. I'm proud to say Louise was recently promoted to supervise our counseling program, but tonight Churchill Junior High proudly celebrates their Teacher of the Year, Louise Sultana. It's said that Churchill Junior High School Support Staff Winner adds irreplaceable value to the classroom, not only for her assigned students, but for all students in the classes and all staff members who are fortunate to work with her. Meet Instructional Assistant, Kosha Desai, who started in our district as a substitute teacher, but was quickly recognized for incredible supportive nature and zest for learning, and hired as an instructional assistant. Kosha has served in the position for 11 years, but she approaches each day with the same enthusiasm as a first-year teacher. Kosha will go above and beyond for the students she works with. She skillfully observes and diagnoses their roadblocks to success and helps break them down. Well beyond the school day, she reflects on the events of the day and develops ways for students to be successful. In one instance, she made custom flashcards for students to help them remember important concepts. Kosha seeks deeper knowledge on content areas from the teachers she works with and studies on her own time so she can better help her students develop fluency in the material. She's intimately familiar with the structure and activities in the classroom and cooperatively supports her teachers so instruction flows without a hitch. Kosha has patience and understanding, even in difficult situations. She does not stop until every student in the classroom is working at their highest potential. If her student indicates that he does not need assistance, she actively will reach out to help students she knows are struggling. Kosha's passion for our students carries over into her voluntary participation in our Sources of Strength program, making it easy to see how much she cares about all of the individuals in all of the classes she works. Congratulations, Kosha Desai.
I'm Mike Vanelle, proud Principal of East Brunswick High School. Our school's belief is achieving excellence with honor and integrity. East Brunswick High School's two staff award honorees exemplify this belief. First, a highly competent, organized, caring, and compassionate secretary from our outstanding counseling department, Julie Anne Elkins. Julie has spent 18 years of dedicated service to our district, having held various positions, including substitute teacher and instructional assistant. In 2013, the Counseling Department at EBHS gained an exceptional teammate. Julie brought with her a wealth of experience which has helped the department move ahead. Her job duties involved giving the technology innovations in the counseling department, including the Common Application and Naviance programs. In addition, Julie played an integral role in the expansion of our Middlesex County College Pathways Program. It was because of Julie's strong organizational and interpersonal skills that the Pathways Program implementation never interrupted the high level of service students and staff received every step of the way. Julie handles the processing of all transcripts for our seniors, monitors the college application process, and documents the amazing list of college acceptances. Not to mention, the endless reports she meticulously completes. Julie works as a liaison between students and counselors to ensure that our students have everything they need to begin their journey to post-secondary education and careers. Julie assists the scheduling of over 100 college visits and promotes this information through Naviance and morning announcements. Although the job can be very hectic at times, Julie takes it in stride. She is a true professional. So, for her amazing interpersonal skills, compassion, excellent work ethic, and ability to work collaboratively, the staff of East Brunswick High School is so proud of our Support Staff Winner this year. Congratulations, Julie Anne Elkins. East Brunswick High School's Teacher of the Year is described as innovative, passionate, knowledgeable, and a student favorite. Yes, that would be the one and only Mr. Herb Paluso. Herb is a teacher of U.S. History II and U.S. History II honors who displays an unmatched passion for teaching history. He began his career as a social studies teacher at Hammerhill Middle School before coming to EBHS. Herb is a content area master, and his knowledge is guided in his revisions of countless curricula. Herb has received many grants that transform this classroom into a lively place where students critically evaluate historical events. In Herb's class, students debate if the U.S. should have entered World War II while utilizing the latest technology and collaborating in flexible learning space. Simply stated, students, or Palusites are they referred to in H-Haul, yes, he has his own following, truly look forward to history class. Students always come first in Herb's class. In fact, he teaches more than just history. He teaches life skills. He is a motivator and cheerleader for his students, encouraging each one to settle for nothing less than their personal best. His teaching is grounded in being respectful, hardworking, creative, empathetic, organized, and patient, all while having a responsible sense of humor. Students are welcome in his classroom before and after school for both academic and social support. Herb is always a willing listener and has his students' best interest in mind always. Herb is also totally immersed and is devoted to the EBHS community. He works at the Genius Bar in the Media Center and supports his colleagues and students with their technology needs. Herb is quick to volunteer his own time to serve on many school and district-wide committees. He routinely attends meetings, games, concerts, plays, fundraisers, and other functions to show his support for his students. In fact, he was a hit at improv night. So, for all of his efforts, in and out of the classroom, but more importantly, for being a role model for our students, we proudly recognize him as EBHS Teacher of the Year. Congratulations, Herb Paluso.
Tonight, I have the privilege of speaking about the John R. Kopko Administration Building's Support Staff Winner this year. Meet Kathy Row Mackenzie. A genuinely beautiful person, inside and out, who we are so lucky to work with every day. Kathy began her career in East Brunswick at Bow Monroe Elementary School in the Child Nutrition Department, preparing and serving meals to our students. She worked at Frost and here at Hammerhill Middle School before receiving a promotion to full-time secretary, where the true magic in her abilities surfaced and has positively impacted our district. You see, not only does Kathy possess superb secretarial and bookkeeping skills, but she has a heart of gold for everyone, true kindness and compassion for our entire school community. To families, she assists them in navigating the school lunch program. To her department, she is the all-around go-to person who can be counted on to order supplies, hand out uniforms, schedule substitutes, anything they need. To the Administration Building staff, she is our daily dose of sunshine that we need. She is always so helpful with anything that goes on in our building, going above and beyond the call of duty, always with a smile on her face. She makes celebrations in our building extra special with her enthusiasm and cheerfulness. Her creativity is just outstanding. We could go on and on, but she would not want us to, because in addition to being amazing at her job duties and pure of heart, she is extremely humble. But tonight, there is no escaping the recognition that she greatly deserves. Congratulations, Kathy Row Mackenzie.
Tonight, we also have the honor of congratulating four amazing people who have devoted 25 years of service to our school district. Please help me congratulate, from East Brunswick High School, Social Studies Teacher, Alan Also from the high school, Media Specialist to the Stars, Cindy Collins.
Also from the high school, media specialist to the stars Cindy Collins. And an amazing school nurse who worked both at the elementary and secondary levels, Churchill Junior High School's Charlene Delaney. And another amazing nurse who actually started as a health teacher and later became a school We also have the honor and unique opportunity to recognize a staff member for 40 years of service, Kathleen Ambrosi, who dedicated- Come here, Kathy. Forty years, social studies teacher at East Brunswick High School, and retired, and didn't get her fill of East Brunswick Public Schools. So she came back as a substitute teacher, and then wanted something a little bit more, and became an instructional assistant, where she supports, right now, our preschool students at Lawrence Brook Elementary School. Kathy has worked with so many people over the years, and as a little surprise, we thought we would bring one of them here for you tonight. So, I introduce to you the East Brunswick Bear. Congratulations Kathy, 40 years of service. He will be staying around for pictures, by the way. We know he's very popular with the children.
Danny, once again, your direction this year, every year you outdo yourself. I think having the principals all in the same room, this is very, very rare, but great, great job. And everybody, thank you. Now, as a gift to all of our award winners this evening, I'm going to call a short recess. So, thanks, everybody. Congratulations again.